We will call the meeting to order and roll call please, Mrs. Fagan.
Certainly. Well, I'm going to start with Carol because I always do. Ms. Doherty, we're waiting for her. Mr. Polowski?
Here.
Mr. Fiori?
Present.
Mrs. Fagan's present. Mr. Martin?
Present.
Mrs. Almeida?
Present.
Mr. DeMello?
Present.
I see Ms. Doherty is back. You want to go present? Carol?
Present.
Okay.
It worked.
It worked?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Souza? Mr. Souza?
Present.
Mayor O'Connell?
Presence. Thank you.
Did you want a prayer tonight?
Yes, sure. Thank you.
Okay, Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for the opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care.
Amen. Thank you. So we can start with the superintendent's update, Mr. Cabral?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I want to be mindful of everyone's time, so we'll jump right into it. So today, we're going to provide you with some insight into work in the future. We're going to begin shifting from our normal e-Mark protocols and we're going to begin transitioning to what we believe will be the task force and the work that will drive the work that we need done between now and when we return to school, which we are hopeful will be in the fall. So Mr. Barada will provide you with an update on some recent changes to our remote education plan. Mrs. Maruni will provide you with an update on her work with the CPAC and also the work that has taken place in her department with special ed, which again, you know, the guidance that we receive from DESI, which also comes from the federal level, you know, has been slow and continues to change. Not at the rate of our remote learning plan, but again, it does come to us slow, which makes the work challenging in addressing the needs of our parents and our students. We'll cover operations. Mrs. Moynihan and Mrs. Perry will talk about the shift that we're going to be making, which we'll call Phase Four, which will begin with the planning for what it will look like when we return. And we're going to call that Task Force, the TPS Readiness to Return Task Force. And I'll let Kathy and Brenda talk about that when we get to that section. And I'll also add how I feel or how I believe we can better utilize this time. I'm getting to the point, you may think differently, but I'm getting to the point where I feel our weekly meetings were covering the same material and we need to begin looking forward and preparing forward. And I think that'll be a better use of our time as well as the use of the leadership team so that we can be very strategic and very focused on the tasks that we need to have in place, the work that we need to have done to ensure smooth opening when we come back in the fall, whether that's in person or the continuation of remote learning. And then finally, I'll have Mrs. Attorney Mitchell provide an update on the work that's taking place in her department as well as updates regarding communication. So with that said, I'll turn things over to Mr. Barada. Before Chris does begin that, there were two items under operations that we will touch on as well, which would be the request to identify domestic and international trips planned for Frisco 21. So I'll quickly share that information with you today. And also, we'll talk a little bit about the high school graduation plans, which the survey ended today. And I do have some information to share with you regarding what Mr. Mattos and his team will be sending out in the near future regarding the high school graduation, which I know many of you are eager to hear as you continue to receive emails and calls from the public. So we understand the pressure that is being placed on many of us. And I believe Mr. Mattos and his team are doing a really good job as far as, you know, planning for what graduation will look like in the near future and possibly in the summer. But again, I want to preface by saying everything will be based on what we can do when it comes to social distancing and policies we may have in place regarding social gatherings. So I apologize and I'll turn things over to Mr. Barada.
Good afternoon, everyone. As Superintendent Cabral mentioned, we transitioned from, I guess you'd say, the third phase of learning and education in Taunton Public Schools as a result of the closure from one of those first few weeks of straight enrichment to then going a little deeper with skills that were already covered and standards to now, which is the exposure to the prerequisite standards that Commissioner Riley and his team identified as those skills essential to bridge the gap between the current school year and next school year. Now, it's important to note that a lot of work has transpired in the last week or so in conjunction with the union to prepare the rollout of this exposure to new standards with a primary focus on math. And as Mr. Martin and all of us can attest to, that math being very sequential and stuff and how it's necessary regardless of what topic area we're studying, math is difficult at the K4 level to instruct via packets. So this week, in conjunction with the union and primarily the hard work of Tina Rogers, our K7 Coordinator, we embedded within our packets going out a lot of visual aids to support both student and families at home with the work. We're also embedding in some voiceovers to support the parents with that work. So we're transitioning again from enrichment to now actually exposure of those essential standards. This will put us in really good step, I guess you'd say, this almost is a good trial period for us to see what will this look like come fall. And this provides us with opportunities of where our strengths lie and where our areas of development needs to occur, which will also inform us in terms of, one, what type of professional development we have to continue on throughout the summertime and how will that be administered to support teachers, depending upon what our school year looks like next year. Also, how are we going to sequence our curriculum to not only almost backfill the skills that were introduced or exposed this year moving forward? I will tell you that the high school has already looked at that within their departments and they've done a great job with that, especially in the area of science. And they're looking for more state guidance in terms of how can they sequence their science classes? And of course, that's the Commonwealth everyone. How are they able to properly sequence their science classes to support students? And again, it's further compounded with the matrix of our high school in terms of our terms of where would that occur? So that's ongoing consultation with the state in terms of sequencing, of course. So there's a lot of hard work that needs to be done. But again, using this last two months or month or so, it's going to really help us understand where our holes and blind spots are moving on. Last thing to discuss about the education. This Friday, we're meeting on a webinar, myself, Mr. Cabral, Mr. Mattos, Kristin Keenan, Burke Delaney, dealing with the competency determination, looking at our high school seniors who in prior years without passing MCAS, what does that look like? So we have some preliminary lists of students that we're reviewing. Unfortunately, they're allowing us at the local level to look at prior coursework as a way of leveling the playing field as making sure that they can reach the determination. We'll have more information next week after that webinar on Friday. And that's what we have right now, Mr. Cabral.
Thank you, Mr. Barada. We'll turn things over to operations with Mrs. Moynihan and Mrs. Perry.
So maybe I'll start. One of the things we had talked about was the return. Mr. Cabral had mentioned it earlier, the return readiness task force. And so that's what we're calling it. And then we're looking at some specific areas of focus. So I've had an opportunity to take some time and look through what some other school systems are doing and what some other areas of focus, what some areas of focus are that they've been using. So obviously, in my world, it would be transportation. And we'll look at, we're going to create a subtask force for transportation, looking at things such as cleaning up the buses, protecting the drivers, social distancing on the buses, overall bus protocols and ridership. We'll also be looking at the operations in regards to the buildings. And that will actually, that will include a lot of things, but just to name a few, obviously, it would be student schedules. It would be planned for continued learning, looking at some different procedures if students or staff become ill, overall navigation of the building, overall building protocols, and many other things that fall under the umbrella of operations. And then as far as facilities goes, Mrs. Moynihan, I know you and I had talked a little bit about it. Do you want to elaborate on that?
Well, facilities will encompass quite a bit of things. And of course, it's going to look at how we're disinfecting our buildings and also how we're preparing our buildings and what it's going to look like. It could be as simple as what will our front desk look like when the public, a parent comes in to drop off homework or something like that. So we're at the beginning phases and we are starting to work with that. We will be asking for volunteers to participate in these task forces, similar to what we've been doing with our community input team. So that is just at the beginning of that, of our return to readiness task force. And so some of the other things that are also happening is that beginning on tomorrow, there will be a meeting in conjunction with Masfo and the MASC. And what they're going to do is they're going to try to provide us some guidance on the current FY20 budget, also to look at the FY21 budget and provide us some guidelines and some hope to get everybody on the same page of seeing where and how we're going to be able to put together a budget with, we are very much in some uncertain times with the governor's budget. Also, Mr. Cabral has mentioned last week that the state has gone ahead and provided us the CARES grant. And similar to what we have for our Title I money, we have been earmarked for about $2 million that is coming to Taunton to use in this time. So we will be applying for the CARES grant, which will encompass the FY20 and also the FY21. And that is, of course, getting us ready through these uncertain times with the COVID-19. And Mr. Cabral and a few others and I will be putting together a two-year plan and how we're going to be using these funds that is going to be earmarked for the district. And that is my update.
Thank you, Mrs. Moynihan. And if I could go back to Mrs. Maruni. Again, in my haste to get through our protocols, I skipped over the part of the most important area of our remote learning plan is educating our most fragile learners or medically fragile learners. So Mrs. Maruni, would you mind providing us an update regarding the outstanding and difficult work taking place in your department?
Good afternoon. Yes, so just so you know, we continue to recognize that servicing our students with the most severe disabilities is a challenge. And every day, we're working as hard as we can to make sure that we're providing equitable access for all these students. There were some concerns expressed to us from CPAC. So yesterday afternoon, Kathy Perry, Jen Mel and Amy Moynihan and myself met with our CPAC. They brought a few points to us that we addressed. The first concern was about the type of team meetings that we were doing. So we started our team meetings on April 24th. The initial guidance from DESI on April 3rd was that we should do transition and annual meetings. The CPAC was a little bit concerned that we weren't going to address other meeting types, but that was not true. So we did an initial survey and we had 296 annual and transition meetings to hold. So as of this point, from what we started the meetings, we've held 67 meetings. We have 131 scheduled, but we had 37 parents that have declined. So as a result of getting all of those meetings scheduled, we have moved on. So on May 5th, we sent a guidance to the guidance counselors indicating that we would like to start holding three-year reevals, that we have the information necessary in order to complete those meetings. And we're also going to be reaching out to parents about extended school year to do those meetings as well. So this morning, I drafted an email to CPAC indicating the timelines for all of these. That was sent to guidance CPAC and principals. The second point that they had was they were concerned about how to access information and who they should speak to. So Mrs. Perry recommended that it start at the building level, that they reach out to the principal, guidance counselors, vice principal and teachers. If they did not get the answers they needed to the questions they had, then refer it to myself, Jen, Amy or Mrs. Perry. The third point that they brought up was they were, they said that there are several questions that parents of special needs students have been asking and they did not know the answers. They had recommended that we do a town hall type of forum, but because we want to protect our students' confidentiality and privacy, sometimes when parents come to those, they have very personal questions and we did not want to expose parents to having to share personal information in front of the group. So we have decided that we're going to do a Q and A. So what CPAC has done is they've created a document that they've sent to their members. If they have specific questions, they are going to put in the document and then forward to us. And we'll be creating that document to share with them once we get all the questions. The other concern that they had was about a letter that was sent on April 9th for DESI. We did share it with CPAC parents. They indicated that some parents had not received it. One of the concerns may have been about email. So they asked that we post it on the district Facebook page. So moving forward, including that letter, we'll be posting any DESI letters on the Taunton Public Schools Facebook page. And the final thing that they are concerned about is, as I've mentioned before, myself, my staff and Attorney Mitchell, we attend webinars weekly from DESI, from Russell Johnston. And he does provide us with updates and new information. They've asked that once those happen, if I would create a bulleted list of any changes or new information and send that to them on Mondays. So I'll be doing that following the meeting. And that's it for us.
Thank you, Judy. I appreciate that very thoughtful update and keep up the great work. And 67 remote IEP meetings is, team meetings, and that can be very challenging during these conditions. So keep up the great work. Only 167 more to go.
We'll get there.
I know you will. I know you will. And then last but not least, I'll ask Attorney Mitchell to provide you with an update on her work and then I'll add a couple additional points.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So the, from the personnel standpoint, there's two areas that we have been moving forward in as much as we can. Obviously, we're not positive where and what we'll be able to do next year or even this summer. So we recognize that we need to approach this with a lot of different contingencies in place. Prior to the closure, we had posted for our summer programs. Our feeling is that we're going to move forward with the hiring of staff into those programs so that that process is completed. And if we need to adjust the way the programs are delivered, we will take care of doing that and talk to the staff that have been hired and confirm that they're still interested with whatever that adjustment is. So we've been busy at work hiring multiple staff. You'll see that in the staffing report that will be coming to you for your next school committee meeting to our summer programs. And that work is ongoing as well. Additionally, consistent with our TEA collective bargaining agreement, we did issue a posting on May 1st for all known vacancies for next school year. Again, we're not positive exactly where we'll be from a budget standpoint for next school year, but we wanted to start the work and get ourselves to to as far along of a position as we can until we get the green light to finish the work. So we have had that posting out. It's been closed. The 10 days have passed. And we'll start interviewing procedures as well. And then as soon as we have the green light with our budget, we will go ahead with our recommendations to keep ourselves moving forward. I've also been working with the superintendent about various communications, communications with the educational staff relating to the remote learning plan and the exposure of students to the essential standards, as Mr. Barada has previously explained. We'll be providing updated communications to our teachers, I'm sorry, to our families about this as well in the upcoming days. And we anticipate that we'll be getting further guidance from DESI on lots of different areas, including ideas about graduation, extended school year, next year, planning. And as we receive those communications, we'll continue to be updating our families on that as well as any changes that come out of the governor this week and going forward because that will, of course, require further communication updates to our community.
Thank you, Attorney Mitchell. And then last but not least, a couple other points. So the high school graduation survey concluded today at 2:00 PM. So the results that Mr. Mattos shared with me was close to 400 students participated in the survey, so 380, just on the 400. 55% said they would prefer a confirmation ceremony on June 7th. 45% stated that they would prefer a summer graduation ceremony if possible. So Mr. Mattos and his team will be drafting a communication that will be going out to all the seniors and their families, notifying them of the result of the survey. Mr. Mattos did share with me some preliminary information today regarding the work that him and his team have been coordinating to prepare for the confirmant and also discussing plans for July. I do want to reiterate, based on some information that I learned today from a disease specialist who is assisting the state and making decisions regarding what the future will look like. Right now, the infection rate is about 15 to 20%. And I think we were looking for that rate to be around 1%. So as of now, it's 15 to 20%, which means out of 100 people, 15 to 20 people are being infected by the disease. So obviously, the lower that number, the better, especially as we get into the summer months and approach the fall. So that is very important information for us to have as we plan these events. But with that said, Mr. Mattos and his team, they have, they are creating what he is calling swag bags, which is very similar to what is presented to the celebrities who attend like the Oscars or the ESPYS and other events. And in the swag bags will be gifts, will be items that the students can have to commemorate and, you know, remember their graduation of, their COVID-20 graduation. Mr. Mattos is coordinating the yearbooks, diplomas, a cap and gown package, which will include something new this year. All students will receive Taunton High School stalls. So that is something that they will receive. And he also distributed the graduation program, which Mrs. Devine and I will review and make sure that there aren't any edits that are required. He's also coordinating with our CVTE department. So our CVTE department, under the guidance of Matt Bork, will be creating a banner in-house that we will display along William Street on our tennis courts to acknowledge all our high school seniors. So I think that'll be a nice gesture. Mrs. Moynihan and I have talked about some other things we can do on the grounds to commemorate and honor our seniors utilizing our groundskeepers and potentially Mr. Bork's skill and creativity. So that's the work that we are doing. So Mr. Mattos has already planned a senior pickup day where seniors will arrive on campus to pick up their swag bags and pick up any other items that they would need for a traditional or remote graduation. So that is being coordinated and that will be supervised by the high school administration, school security, as well as the Taunton Police Department to make sure that our students adhere to the social gathering guidance and also to the social distancing guidance. We do not want the students or we do not want any unsanctioned events taking place on our grounds or on our campus. We've also, we're also utilizing the great skill and creativity of Mr. Jakes and his team. So they're going to be working on a movie that will incorporate the traditional aspects of a graduation. There'll be a few surprises that I won't share with you, but you know, Mr. Mattos loves to incorporate and embed surprises into the graduation. So we've spoken offline about that and what that will look like. And they're also creating slides that we will utilize for the students to share some of their personal aspects so we can get to know them and also in a way to recognize and acknowledge all their hard work. And Mr. Mattos continues to meet with the, what he's called the Class of 2020 Leadership Guild. And he'll be utilizing the Class of 2020 Leadership Guild to reach out to other seniors in the class to talk about the potential of scheduling events in the summer and what are the events they'd like to see. Traditionally, around this time, we'd be planning a senior yearbook signing, a senior carnival, as well as a cookout and some additional activities. So that is something that the high school leadership will reach out to other high school students for their important, their support in planning those events. But again, I want to continue to reiterate, we can have all the plans in the world for July, but unless we receive clear guidance on what social distancing will look like and what the gatherings will look like, I mean, we may not be able to pull off all the items or all the events that we'd like to pull off or they may be modified in a way that is manageable. And I also want to stress, based on the task force that we are beginning to put together, March is going to be a very, very busy month for the Taunton Public Schools, especially Taunton High School, because we need to make sure when March arrives that we are focused on opening our school come September. So we've got a lot of work ahead of us, again, to prepare for next year, but we also want to make sure that we do right by our seniors by providing them with opportunities to be recognized for their 13 years of hard work in the Taunton Public Schools. We want them to celebrate this great achievement, but we also want to bring closure to what has been 13 years of outstanding work for many of our students. So that's the update regarding the high school and graduation and what Mr. Mattos is working on. And I will be sure to share that communication with the school board before I get sent out to the seniors. And then I also wanted to make the school board aware that I did ask Mr. Barada and Mr. Mattos to share with me any domestic trips, so any domestic trips outside of New England that typically take place at Taunton High School as well as international trips. So what I did receive or what we received was a Taunton High School band. And I'll forward this to you so you have the written record. The Taunton High School band typically would attend what they call the Taunton Dallas Band Exchange in regional tour. That was scheduled to take place in April 2021. Spoke with Mr. Fry today. He realizes that that event will not take place because they don't have enough time to begin preparing for it. But that is something that they typically would have done. They would have requested permission to go to Dallas for this band exchange, but he doesn't anticipate making that request this year. Our CVTE department has three events that require travel out of state. There's the DECA National Competition, which would be scheduled for April 2021. That is scheduled to take place in Anaheim, California. There's the National Pro Star Event, which is for our culinary arts students. And I believe some students in all our CVTE department, I believe. That one was scheduled to take place in Washington DC in May of 2021. And then there's the National Skills Conference, which would be held in June of 2021 in Atlanta, Georgia. So those are the trips that were brought to our attention that students typically participate in domestically. And again, no preparation, nothing has been done at this point to prepare for those trips. And then the overseas trips that we've already discussed, and again, I'll share this with you. The Taunton High School Social Studies Department was planning a trip to Italy in winter of 2021. The Taunton High School English Department has had a trip that was scheduled for April of 2020. You may recall at the initial onset of the coronavirus, when we were discussing field trips and whether or not to close or not close, which would have been back in March, right? It would have been March 12th to March 11th when we had our meeting, our emergency meeting. We talked about that trip that was scheduled for April vacation. Because of the uncertainty at that time, that trip was pushed out until April of 2021. So that trip is still on the books, but obviously, that's not a trip that we would foresee taking place at this time. And then the last trip would be the Taunton High School Department, Taunton High School Science Department, spring of 2021 to Iceland. So the only trips that I listed, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, of those seven trips, only one was approved by the school committee and that was the trip to France and Netherlands. The remaining trips were not approved. In the two overseas trips, we have notified those families to seek reimbursement. So two of the families, two of the trips, families will be made whole. And I believe the France and Netherlands trip, because of fundraising and because of the reimbursement policy with EF Tours, they will be able to recoup all of their funding minus $160 for the France and Netherlands trip. And again, I will send that to you so you have that information.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So the, basically, the administration is putting a hold on any international trips. Is that, would that be fair to say?
If you were going to ask me for a recommendation tonight, I would say that we issue a moratorium on any international or domestic travel outside of New England for the FY21 school year. I'll make the motion.
Second the motion.
So there's a motion made and seconded. All those on discussion. Mr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. I understand the situation and the developments of uncertainty regarding COVID-19. I think it's premature to today take a vote and wipe out. I think it's premature to today, take a vote and wipe out all of twenty twenty one. Again, I'm a big advocate of travel, whether it's international or domestic. But I think it's premature that we wipe it out because if I recall on March fourth. When things were starting up and starting to brew, we were very lax about Daisy to make decisions on March fourth regarding this year. So again, considering voting today to wipe out the entire twenty twenty one, I think it's premature, thank you.
Mrs. Almeida and then Mrs. Doherty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any problems voting on twenty twenty one to not have any travel. Because from everything that you're hearing and everything that I'm reading recently. It's saying that it's gonna take till twenty twenty two before we get back to normal. So if that's the case, I really personally don't wanna see or jeopardize us. And I think now's the time to tell them that they just can't do it for next year. So I will support the motion one hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Doherty and then Mr. Souza.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I think particularly about the competitive trips, the domestic trips for, for DECA and the band and CVTE. And all of those where our kids are at the end of a school year. Performing, contributing, participating in a way that they are competing with others around the region or around the country. I think that we should take our signals from obviously the condition of the COVID nineteen at the time. But also from the organizations that are sponsoring these activities. These are a year from now, we could certainly look at the situation around COVID and the lead agencies that are running these trips. For their signals to cancel trips in April of twenty one. So I would be opposed to the motion at this time, I think it should be taken up at a time when we have better information.
Thank you, Mrs. Doherty, Mr. Cabral wants to say something.
After hearing the comments, would it, and again, and I think back in March, I did make a, I did make a recommendation issue moratorium then. So would it make sense then, and again, if Mr. Souza wants to change his motion, that's fine. Would it make sense then to cancel any domestic and international trips through, for the remainder of the calendar year? And then reassess the situation during the new year. Based on the newest guidance or latest guidance that we may receive.
Okay, just a minute, so Mr. Souza, did you still have something? And then Mr. Palowski and Mr. DeMello.
Well, a couple of things. First thing was the superintendent's making the recommendation as the professional in charge of the district. So I, I think that weighs pretty heavy, should weigh pretty heavy on everyone's mind. He's the day-to-day guy. He knows what needs to be done. I certainly think that there's nothing says, if there's a, if something comes up, we can't. Go on a case-by-case basis. The second thing is, we already have half a year that the kids haven't learned. Well, haven't learned any new material from our teachers face-to-face. So with that being said, I'd like to hear from the professionals where. We're gonna have to have time on learning next year. Do we need all this time for time on learning? And I think the answer to that is yes. So if the professionals could tell us right now, the superintendent, Mr. Barata, and whoever else wants to chime in, let's answer to that. I think that that's probably more important than field trips at this point. And there's no one in my, in my, this is my eleventh year, there's no one in the eleventh, in, in the time that I've been on this committee. That hasn't advocated for field trips more than me. And, and I have updated that policy and I've advocated for it as a parent. Yeah, because before I, as when I was on this committee at the beginning, I was a parent that went on those field trips. There's no one that loved those field trips more and advocated for them. So I think this is, this is an important rule for us. But certainly, if the professionals are telling us more time on learning, then we get, we have to listen. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah, I think Mr. Bar, I think Mr. Barata did a very good job in articulating that point as far as the changes we're gonna see in our pacing charts next year. To make sure that we spiral back and cover some of this material that the students haven't been exposed to, to ensure that they are. So that's gonna look very different, so time on learning will be very, very important. And we'll need to be maximized more than ever. But I think it's also important too with, with time on learning, many of the trips that we did discuss take place during times where school is not in session. So I would, I would caution that we, that we take a look at the trips that take place during the regular school day. Those trips may need to be looked at on a case-by-case basis and, and not held. To ensure that students are not missing very valuable class time. But again, international triple, international travel abroad. I can see waiting till the end of this year. But, but I also know how much time and effort that goes into preparing for these trips. So I don't believe any organization at the high school would be able to organize an international trip. Within a school year, as it takes at least two years for them to recruit and plan and fundraise. In order to attend one of those trips, as, as we've learned in previous discussions. So I think a, a halt on international travel would make sense, knowing how much time and effort goes into it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cabral. Mr. Palowski, then Mr. DeMello, then Mrs. Fagan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, I would agree a hundred percent. I think we should cancel any planned international travel for twenty twenty one. And furthermore, I think it would be a good idea for the school committee to reexamine our whole policy and, and procedures. Trips, thinking about how we would bring it back in twenty twenty two. Next, I wanna make certain, and this is, you know, me speaking as a parent for the Italy trip. I haven't received any direct direction on, on how to go forward and get reimbursed. I understand that because the school committee never did pre-approval for these trips, we are entitled to it. But I just wanna make sure that all the parents of the existing trips are going to get. Clear, specific direction on the steps that we need to take to be made whole. And also, I, I wanna make certain that we're giving direction to the parents of the Greece trip on all their options. Because I do understand that if, if somebody has lost their job, they can make an insurance claim to get back the five hundred dollars that, that were less than the fee. And sorry, the, also, I, I think it would be fine if we decided not to do any domestic trips. And, and realistically, if there were any trips that we wanted to do in twenty twenty one, make that a thing that has to be presented to us and we'd have to approve it before we go forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mayor. So I will not talk about EF Tours today, I'm glad that everybody thinks that's a good thing. But I believe that we have canceled all twenty twenty one international trips. That's all I've been hearing for the last few weeks, that all trips have been canceled internationally. My statement was specifically to domestic trips, that we should not include that in the bucket. Because we, first off, as a school committee, we haven't approved any of those trips for twenty twenty one, for academic year twenty twenty one. And things can change, and as long as there's no financial consequences by still exploring possibilities to do domestic trips, whether it's. New England or Dallas or California. I think it's premature to include it as part of the entire bucket of the moratorium being issued. That's what I wanna be clear about, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeMello, Mrs. Fagan, and then Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Mayor O'Connell. Mr. Cabral, when I, when I spoke to you earlier today, I, I, you remember our conversation about canceling those trips?
Yes.
Okay, here's my concern, when you cancel for twenty twenty one, they're still pushing that you take a voucher for next year. So.
And a voucher, voucher's not an option, because I don't see the school committee, and that's something that we, that's something coming from EF Tours, let's be clear. Public schools. And I, and I don't, and I don't see my administration or this school board approving anything to do with EF Tours. As long as I'm the superintendent in the Taunton Public Schools.
But what I'm, what I'm suggesting to you, Mr. Cabral, do we grandfather in those people that may wanna take advantage of having that? Because that's what they're pushing. Cause that's the experience that my daughter-in-law had when she said, hey, I just want the money back, you know? But I, the thing is, if they're offering a voucher and we say you can't go, then the, having the voucher, you can't do that either. So the only thing they can do is give the money back.
Yeah, but again, I, I don't, I don't see the voucher being utilized in the Taunton Public Schools. And I believe the voucher has to be exchanged. To another member of, another student in the Taunton Public Schools. I don't believe the voucher can be sold to a student in another school system, it has to stay within time. So it really limits their options to recruit that funding. I, I know it can be passed to a family member, but again, I think the best that would be to recruit as much funding as you can. And not, not risk future trips being canceled.
Mr. Cabral, but what they're pushing is that perhaps you can use it, you know, like when you go off to college or something. And I, I think, I think maybe the thing ought to be is that just get your money back.
That's what we are, that's what we are advising our parents to get their money back and notify the Attorney General. Because if the Attorney General prevails, they'll be made whole.
Just as long as you make that clear to parents, Mr. Cabral, that's all I was concerned about, okay?
And the, the other piece that we are doing too is Mr. Barata's work and Mr. Perp with the verify that parents have contacted EF Tours for their refund on the Greece trip. So we do wanna make sure that that, that takes place. And we will, we will do same, we will do the same with the other trips as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanna say that I don't have a problem canceling any international trips. But the domestic ones, I don't look at some of them as field trips, I look at more as competition, especially DECA. And I know the students put a lot of work, time on learning into their preparation for those DECA competitions. And I think it's a little early that we cancel those trips, which are a year away from now. And as someone alluded to earlier, when the time comes, if we have to cancel, we cancel them. But I don't think we should just cancel immediately at this point in time, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, Mr. Souza.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've, I've thought about this again, because. Nothing comes to us unless it goes to the superintendent first and he has to sign off on it. So really, the domestic trips, he has to sign off on them before they come to us. So there's no sense in including that in the motion, because what, he'll make the decision before it even gets to us. Whether the domestic trips are gonna go or not go, using his best judgment of the, of the, what's happening at the time. Whether it may be COVID, whether it may be time on learning, no matter what it is. So I'm gonna, I'm going to amend my mo, I'm gonna amend my own motion, change my motion to. Include just a moratorium on international travel for the FY twenty one, the twenty 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 one school year.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Souza, is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay. On discussion, Mr. Fiori.
I'm sorry, the second from the original motion has to take the friendly amendment.
Was the second.
Okay, so who seconded the original motion?
Yeah.
This original motion and on discussion.
Okay, but I did just call on Mr. Fiori, so can I get you in a minute, please? Thank you. Mr. Fiori.
Thank you. My concern is, we don't know what any travel is going to look like for several months yet. I mean, listening to Dr. Fauci and some of the other experts out of Washington. We're really gonna, pretty much practicing considerable social distancing, at least for the rest of calendar twenty twenty. And I can tell you from my own perspective, I had planned to go to Europe next year. And I am certainly going to postpone it another year. I, I just can't imagine that we're gonna have. Efficient travel with. People being able to sit next to each other on, on planes and so forth for quite a while yet. The virus is not going away that quickly. We, there may be a slightly smaller. Rate than was feared, but on the other hand, we don't know what the second wave is gonna be like. And we don't know how long it's gonna take to really have it under control. And most of the experts are saying at least a year. So I, I would, I would have problems with doing anything domestically even for twenty twenty. And I certainly say nothing at all for the remainder of the twenty twenty one. School year, I, I, I just don't think the logistics of, of travel are going to be such that it's gonna be worthwhile.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida.
I don't know, I, I'd like to check the minutes of previous motions, Madam Mayor, because I think we already voted that we would not have any travel for twenty twenty one. Foreign travel. So I think that was already made that motion. But to, this motion was to include domestic, and that's why I supported that. Because I really firmly believe, I don't wanna put our children in harm's way. And I'm sure that the rest of the school committee doesn't wanna do that either. But if you really listen, you hear what the, the experts are saying, it's gonna go into twenty twenty two. So why would we not now say to our students, no, there'll be no domestic travel in twenty twenty one. Because of the fact that we need to keep you out of harm's way. So I think the motion that Mr. Souza just made has already been made by the school committee. And I think we need to check those mo, that motion, because we don't need to make it a second time. I seconded it on the caveat, because I felt that we shouldn't do also domestic travel.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Sorry about that. Would you like to withdraw your motion, get the information and take it up again if necessary at a future meeting?
You read my mind. That's exactly what I'm gonna do, because I still think we didn't vote on it, we may have suggested it, I don't think we voted on it. But I'm gonna withdraw the motion, because I think international is, is, is on this. But I certainly, domestic I think is on a case-by-case, and again, the administration has to bring it to us and they're not gonna let it go through. So thank you, Madam Mayor, I'll withdraw the motion.
Thank you. Okay. So any other discussion on the superintendent's update? Mr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, through you, I, I appreciate the superintendent sharing the readiness response task team, I think it's called. But as I shared with you earlier in a week. Bridgewater and the State Universities has what they call a Safe Return Task Force. And in that memo to you, I shared five different scenarios. So although I appreciate what you shared with us tonight, are you considering any other of those five scenarios? I'd be more than happy to just share the titles of those scenarios with everybody, if I may.
Yes, actually, yeah, Mr. DeMello, yeah, I'll just explain real quickly. So I did share your memo with the leadership team. So we, we reviewed the memo and we were using that to drive or guide our work in addition to the meetings that I've attended, I attended last week. With the Old Colony Superintendent, as well as the Urban Superintendent. So that work will be embedded into the, the work that the task force does. And obviously, one of the pieces that we forgot to add is that we would welcome the input from school committee members to participate on those task forces. And so you have expertise in different areas. For example, Mr. Martin, he's, he's done facilities and operations. So he may be someone who might be interested on being on either the facilities or the operations task force. Mr. DeMello, you have a background as well, that would, that would benefit the committee as well as others. As I look across the different boxes. So we would welcome your input and obviously that work will be embedded. We're trying, those are the three buckets we'll focus on, but in those three buckets, there'll be additional work that will be, that will be conducted as well.
Sure, and Mayor, one more point. So for example, what comes to mind in, in the TPS system, which is unlike the State University system, is we have Chromebooks out there. So what do we do at the end of the school year? Are we collecting the Chromebooks? We letting the students keep them in case we don't come back in September? I mean, again, that, that's something that comes to mind, because although I have the expertise of the five-point plan that I shared with you. That wasn't developed by me, of course, it was developed by a lot of constituents, including students and unions and so forth and so on. What is TPS doing in regard to those, what, five thousand Chromebooks that are out there come June seventeen?
Yeah, so actually, Mrs. Blin.
Have to consider.
Yeah, we, and we have, Mr. DeMello. So Mrs. Blinow and her team has actually spoken Cathy to develop a protocol. Cause one of the things we wanna do with the Chromebooks is they probably need to be serviced too. So we wanna make sure that they're functioning, they're in good standing. And we need to inventory to make sure we have them all back. And she's also putting together a plan, should we need to purchase or lease additional Chromebooks in the event we have to go one-to-one, because this continues. And it's gonna be full online remote learning. We wanna be in a position in the, in this, in September to be able to roll this out. We don't wanna be placed similar to where we were March thirteenth, you know, trying to figure this out on the fly. So we are going to engage our union, our unions, we, we already shared that or expressed that thought with the TEA. We understand there's gonna be some. We understand there's going to be some aspects of returning back to work that we're probably going to have to impact bargain, or bargain with our union. So, yeah, which we're taking a very comprehensive global look. And obviously, you know, student voice, parent voice will be very important. We want to make sure we do this right, because the more that we can address now, the smoother things will be in September. Again, I want to stress, I do not want anyone on my leadership team or the school board to be where we were on March 13th. You know, trying to figure out what March 16th was going to look like.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Pulaski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have, I have questions regarding the grading policy and questions regarding senior plans. So I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. So first on, on the grading policy, because I'm hearing a lot of confusion from teachers and parents. So with
I'm sorry.
So sorry, with, with senior grades closing in two weeks, I'd like to know what direction has been given to the teachers regarding credit, no credit grading and final grading? And how do they calculate the final grades if the fourth term is credit, no credit?
So we were, so Mr. Mattos and his team, they've developed a recommendation based on urban superintendents and superintendents in the Hockamock Week. And they created something that fits, they believe fits the Totten Public Schools, or fits Totten High School. We have waited to issue that guidance, because we were told by the commissioner last week that they were going to provide us with guidance and recommendations. And I wanted to make sure that whatever the high school issued aligned with the commissioner. That guidance has not come out yet. Because that guidance was going to include
John, we can't hear you right now.
Frozen.
Yeah, you're frozen. Wait for a moment until he comes back.
Sorry about that. Sorry about that. What was the last word that you remember hearing?
Mr. Pulaski?
So you said you had not received the guidance yet from Desi regarding the grades, grading.
So the, the guidance that Desi was going to issue was going to be high school specific. It was also going to include guidance for schools that operate under a block schedule. So what we've told Mr. Mattos, because he's been very eager to close this out, is that if we don't here by Friday, we're going to go with the plans that the high school has created. And I'll share that, I'll share that with the school committee. Mr. Barada is also working with our elementary school principals and our middle school principals. That guidance is going to look a little different, based on the work that the students are doing. That'll be more credit, no credit, participation, no participation, moderate participation, high participation. So we have some, some good guidance that we'll share with our school leaders. And again, I want to continue to stress my position, and you may think differently than this, but my position is that I do not want to see students suffer for something they had no control over. So we want to make sure that every student has an opportunity, you know, to maintain their current grades or improve their grades based on this pandemic.
I'll say.
So it's coming.
Okay, excellent. And Madam Mayor, if I can, now, I just have some questions regarding the senior plans. So again, based on all the passionate feedback that we've been getting from the parents and seniors that I know everyone's got, I got a couple of questions. So I just want to know, is there any way that we could make a, under the guidelines of social distancing, some sort of a senior car parade happen?
I wouldn't, I would advise against this school committee organizing such a trip based on liability. Again, I spoke with the superintendent in a neighboring town, who was just recognized for their, or whose parade was in the town. Because that, that was not a sanctioned school event, and that did not stop on school grounds. So I just want to put it out there. And again, they, I know that's a proud tradition that takes place on a yearly basis at that school, in that system. But my recommendation would be not to, just based on some of the pictures that I saw, social distancing was violated numerous times, just based on what I saw. So I would advise against the school committee or the Totten Public Schools sanctioning such an event.
Well, I guess, I guess maybe one of the reasons that I would, that parents would like to see something like that sanctioned is so that it could actually be controlled by the school system or help from local police department or anything, so that something like that wouldn't, wouldn't pop, pop up. But I guess I'd just like to see, or parents would like to see some sort of plan of something creative. You know, the virtual graduation is great, it's a thing that we're going to have, make sure we have something. But I think, I think parents and seniors are looking for something a bit more creative. So yeah, it wouldn't have to be the car parade, that just seems like a thing that could be done in a safe fashion. So I think people just want to see that there's some plan for something creative. And then I guess you, you already kind of spoke about it, but I, I think parents want to get, get clear communication that there is at least going to be the plan for senior prom, cookout, any sort of senior in-person events for some time in the future, understanding that we have absolutely no idea when or if the social distancing guidelines will be relaxed. But at, at least if there's a plan, how in the works, I think that's going to make people feel, feel better. At least based on the feedback that I've been getting.
I, I would agree with you, Mr. Pulaski. I think people need something to look forward to. And I'm one of those people who likes to plan, knowing that I have a family vacation. And, you know, that helps the time pass, and it gives me, it gets me excited and helps, you know, makes the days go by a little faster. So I agree with you. And again, Mr. Madison, I have talked about that, and he will reach out to the senior guild and to engage the seniors, talk about some of the activities they'd like to see, if, again, if we can host these events. And I, there's nothing more that I would love to do than flip some burgers for our seniors in July. They deserve it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Almeida, did you have your hand up? And then Mrs. Doherty?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't particularly want to talk about another community and what they do, but that's not something that they just did out of the spirit. That's been something they've done every year. It's similar to our senior skip day, they've done it for years and years, it's not new, not a new thing. But no, the school department does not sanction that. And I agree with you, Mr. Cabral, it could be a liability issue. If someone gets in a car accident, and it's a, if the school department sponsors it, then it becomes a problem. I for one want to sit back and wait and see what Mr. Mattos has to say about how he plans on doing things at this point. I don't want to make any decisions for him, he's always done a wonderful job. We will be having a high school subcommittee shortly, not today, but I'm just trying to set one up. And we'll get a lot of questions answered at that time also. So, you know, I appreciate everything that the school department's doing and trying to help our seniors. And I'm sure that we all have gotten the same emails from the same parents, telling us the same things, what they want for their kids. And you know what? I want all those for them too. They shouldn't be short-changed. But we really have to be careful what we do. Because if we have something in June, or if we have something in July, and one person in that crowd gets COVID, it's shame on us. We need to be cautious of what we're going to do. We need to be totally cautious. There's just too many students, too many parents and family members that would like to participate, and they're not going to be able to. I mean, the students that are graduating from college this year are going through the same issues. They go through the same issues, and they're putting it off until October. Colleges, and, you know, I know B.C. said it was October 12th, this, the 10th of October. So the surrounding colleges are putting off their graduations as far as October. So do they know something that we don't know? But thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Doherty, and then Mr. Souza.
So I have a couple of questions, I have a graduation comment, but two other questions. So if others have graduation before I move on to my other questions. So one of the things, Mr. Cabral, that you had mentioned is a senior pickup day, which appears to be a live activity. Obviously, if they're coming to get their swag bags and cap and gown and other kinds of memorabilia that they might be given. How is that going to, how is it going to work?
So it's going to be done alphabetically by house, and students will have set times. So it'll be very similar to how we disperse the Chromebooks, where we told parents to arrive at a certain time, report to this location, and then we had them positioned or distanced from each other, so they wouldn't run into each other or come into contact with one another. So that's how it's going to work. It's going to be very, very structured.
So is there some way perhaps we can build on that to make it more of a celebratory moment? So they're getting all of this stuff, I don't know, maybe there's a band or choir or some kind of celebration while they're there, they are live, even though it doesn't make up for a walking across the stage graduation. There'll be, I don't know, us or others who might be there to cheer them on in some way, I'm not sure. So just put that in your cap, and in Mr. Mattos's cap, maybe there is something you can build on.
Think in a DJ.
If Mr. Souza's comment is on graduation, because I have but two budget questions, so we could go back to that.
Mr. Souza?
Well, I was, I just had a quick one on the graduation, in that, again, I think my colleagues that haven't been here a while should take, should talk to the law office and the city risk manager. Anything that's sponsored by Totten Public Schools or the city, it open for liability. And it's a sanctioned event is a sanctioned event. So we really need to walk on, on marbles on this one, because we really need to take a look at it. Remember, neighboring districts have one-third the amount of graduates that we do. When you multiply that times three or four, it becomes three or four times the problem for security and same, and issues like that. So that's the only comment that I wanted to make. I am, believe me, I've been on the high school subcommittee. I, I, this is killing me that we can't help these kids, but we have to, we have to do the best we can to limit exposure. And that's the most important thing. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Doherty, thank you. So Mrs. Doherty, and then Mr. DeMello.
I have another one after too, about the budget.
Okay, so I have, I have two questions regarding the budget. One is, in Mrs. Moynihan's presentation, she indicated that we were getting some $2.4 million in addition to the $1.4 million, I think that's the figure from Title I. So that's a couple of $3 million, .4 dollars. And indicated that people would be working together to decide how that money would be used. I'm assuming that whatever the decisions are that are made at your level, superintendent, Mrs. Moynihan as well, will come to the school committee for their approval, not
So what, what I plan on doing, because again, I have some experience in Totten. I do recall when we received the Ed jobs funding, in the process that we used with the Ed jobs funding, I put together the spreadsheet with Dr. Hackett, and we presented that spreadsheet to the school committee. So you knew how the Ed jobs funding was being utilized. I think it would be advantageous for us to stretch those dollars, if possible, over two fiscal years. So as the economy recovers and our Chapter 70 grows, we can build whatever positions we utilize our CARES funding for, to be there in the future. So I, that's the strategy, the approach I plan to use with the CARES funding. The Title I, the Title I funding, we have, since I've been in Totten, I don't recall ever presenting the Title I budget to the school committee. Just what we received as far as an allocation, knowing that the Title I budget does cover our Title I staff, provides a lot of PD, and has a little bit of, a little bit of money in there for supplies, not much. Most of it is in professional development, staffing, and after-school programs to support our students.
So if I might go on, that $1.4 million, that's a, I didn't understand that that was Title I money, but that it was a money from the federal government that was built on a portion of the Title I allocation to us. So at any rate, regardless, I'm imagining that you're going to come back to the school committee with whatever recommendations you're making for the utilization of those funds, given that we're looking at developing a new budget for fiscal '21 that it's a new budget for fiscal '21. We don't, as you point out, don't know what the local aid is going to be, what Chapter 70 is going to be. But if some of those funds, given the definition of how those funds are utilized, can be used to help to support the budget going forward, then we would want to be aware of that. That's, so that's what I'm asking, that we would be presented with that information. Thank you, Superintendent. The second question has to do with the line item presentation that we were given, the quarterly school financial report last week had several lines that were over budget. I understand that when transfers are made, you come back to the school board for a sanction for that. So I have two questions. One is, what is the, this quarter, this quarterly report was as of what date?
Oh, that would have been April, we did that two weeks, three weeks ago, two or three weeks ago.
Good Mrs. Moynihan might know what as of.
I know it says March 30th on it, but I believe we had data from April, probably would have been second or third week of April.
Doesn't say anything on it, actually.
I thought it said as of March 30th. But that was, that was a, that was our third quarter report, plus any adjustments we made in forecasting what we needed to encumber for the remainder of the school year.
So for a March 30 report, many of those, all of those line items, with the exception of two or three, are way up into the 90s, 98, 99, and over 100% expenditure. We are not in danger of running into a deficit this year, are we?
Are we always overspent? Because again, the way, remember in the memo when we built our budget, we have two pools of money that we utilize. We have the appropriation from the city, and we have our revenue, which is about $6.3 million. So you approved a total budget, operational budget of around $94 million. So what we've done with the appropriation is we've encumbered as much of the appropriation that we feel we need to get us through fiscal '20, because we are trying to maximize our reserves for fiscal '21.
So the question is, we are not in danger of falling into deficit?
We will spend our entire appropriation. Okay, so we're going to spend our entire appropriation. And if there's, if there's any lines that go over, exceed the appropriation, we have our revolving, we have our circuit breaker carryover, we have some grant carryover, we have a McKenney-Vento reimbursement we'll be receiving, we have the cable commission reimbursement we'll be receiving, that we will use to balance our budget. We cannot exceed $88.2 million.
So the answer, the, the good answer to the question that I ask is, is no. Given the scenario that you've developed, the resources that we have available, it's past practice that we will not be in deficit when all those numbers are put together.
Correct. I do not plan, I do not plan on going to the city and asking for money.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Point of information.
Sure, Mrs. Almeida.
Does this special meeting preclude us from the open meeting law, as far as you have to have the items posted on the agenda to be able to speak on them?
It's a regular meeting, just
It's just a special meeting.
Correct, but it's a special meeting with some reading of the school committee that's been posted, so.
And we have an agenda.
Correct.
And I thought we had to stick to an agenda.
Correct.
Because you can't bring anything up at a regular meeting.
Well
Not on the agenda.
Right, the next meeting is a regular agenda. This meeting here, we have the critical items. So the critical, critical items, and we have the superintendent's report. That's, that's the every other meeting.
Right, and we're on the superintendent's report, and I think there was talk about
Okay.
the budget, funding and appropriations, and that's where this conversation is being from.
Yep, that's where it falls on there, right?
All right.
Thank you, Mrs. Almeida. Okay, Mr.
Budget.
I'm sorry, Mr. DeMello is next, and then Mr. Souza.
Mayor, two quick points through you, Mayor, to Superintendent Cabral. So to Ms. Doherty's point, based on the information we received, you're looking, you were looking at a $30,000 surplus based on the encumbrance to based on the encumbrance to date on the last report you gave us. Is that where we're at?
Correct.
Okay, good. So that that's, that's a new point, because I was very confused about the $6 million and that was explained, so I'm fine. Thank you for that. On the next point, Madam Mayor, goes to Mr. Souza, uh, about, you know, Mr. Souza, I appreciate your 11 years of service on the school committee, preparing for graduation and your involvement of graduation. But remember, we have other talents amongst our members. I've been at Bridgewater for 12. I volunteered for 11 of the commencements and we we shuttle through approximately 2,500 students every commencement in two sessions just recently. So to Mr. Pulowski's point, uh, anything that could be done with the swag bag, if we could incorporate some type of of, Ms. Doherty mentioned this too, uh, incorporate something, that would be uh, great. And I appreciate Mr. Cabral, Mr. Mattos, the entire, entire leadership team uh, coming together to to develop something that could possibly turn into a little bit more than just a virtual graduation. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, Mr. Mr. Souza?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one question on the CARES money for FY 20, FY 21. So we have um, possibly money for in both fiscals. But really, we only have six weeks left in FY 20. So are we expecting money in FY 20 that will carry over to 21 or we're just expecting money for 21?
Yeah, so the way the CARES Act works, Mr. Souza, we can apply effective March 13th, 2020. And we have until September 30th, 2022 to spend the funding. Or we can, we can apply for Ju- July 1st, 2020. And we have until September 2022 to expend the money. So some districts, some districts have already put out a lot of funding to address COVID-19. So they'll be able to use that funding to offset those costs. So we are going to apply effective March 13th, knowing that you have until 2022 to cover the cost, to expend that money down.
So it'll be a lot of overlap and there's a, so there'll be like almost a third pool of money that will be able to shuffle around a little bit.
Yeah, and the, and the way we're looking at it, again, just to give you the way my mind or our mind, the the way the leadership team is thinking about it, the way we're looking at it is, there's a lot of flexibility with that funding. So I've, and the funding has to be related to COVID-19. So take for example, our custodian supplies. You need custodian supplies to clean your schools to combat COVID-19. So in theory, we could zero out the supply line for our custodians and use the COVID-19 funding, which will then reduce our budget. You follow me? So we could do the same thing with our nursing supplies. We could take the nursing supplies off the budget and charge it to the to the CARES Act. And again, that will reduce our appropriation, our our budget. So we're looking at this funding as a means to avoid cuts. So that's why we're going to be, we're going to try to be creative and look for positions that we can pull off the budget to cover, uh, to bring our cost down, while also being mindful that there are going to be some unanticipated costs that we can utilize that funding for.
Yeah, it's prepping for the buildings and things like that in the fall, unanticipated. And that's going to be an issue, uh, now, once we get the guidance from the DESE and and the DEPH and things like that.
And then, and then the the last piece I'll mention too is we do need to reach out through our parochial schools because there is the mechanism in this funding where we do have to utilize proportionate share with our parochial schools. The good news is, I believe there's only one parochial school now uh, in Taunton, which is an elementary school. So the the amount of that funding should be, should be minimal.
So that's good news because that, because we got extra time to spend it. But also too, is we can, we can, we can encumber and then spend that money on possibly restoring uh, positions for teaching. So that's, that's, that's great news. Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm all set.
You're welcome. Okay, are we done with the superintendent's report? Okay, uh, so moving on to see critical items not recently anticipated, 48 hours in advance. Seeing none. And there is no press time.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Motion made. Motion made, seconded, all opposed in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, none, so voted. Thank you all very much.
Good job, everyone.